No, there's no set limit.
Okay.
You guys ready?
Yes, sir.
It's usually no problem.
We'll go ahead and get started. If everybody could stand, say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Tim Brown.
Here.
Brad Goodecker.
Here.
Joe Saylor.
Here.
Richard Hill.
Here.
Have a quorum.
Invitation, Carmen Slim, please.
Your heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Please bless our community, keep us all safe, and be with those in need. Your name is private.
Amen.
Thank you. Review and approval of agenda. Any questions concerned?
I don't have anything, nothing for me.
Brown?
Sir, thank you.
Minutes, June 11th, 2024, meeting minutes. Questions, concerns? Do we have a motion for approval?
I'll move to approve.
Second thing. Mr. Saylor, Mr. Goodecker, take a vote, please.
Tim Brown.
Yes.
Brad, Mr. Goodecker. Joe Saylor.
Yes.
Richard Hill.
Yes.
Pass four to zero.
Thank you. voucher package, 79, 2024. Questions, concerns at all? Mr. Brown, anything?
No, sir.
Over here, nothing?
They did update their software a little bit, so you can, on the end column, it's explanations to cut it off.
You can read the whole thing.
Yeah.
Making progress.
I'll move to approve voucher packet, 7924.
Second. Mr. Saylor, Mr. Brown. Take a vote, please.
Tim Brown.
Yes.
Brad Goodecker.
Yes.
Joe Saylor.
Yes.
Richard Hill.
Yes.
Pass four to zero.
Financial reports, Ms. Carmen.
So, some updates on the general funds. We are, so we're having pretty clear, I believe, that it's still not quite reconciled, so we've received that there was a huge deposit in the revenue for the funds, that was our biggest settlement. And, I guess, out of the ordinary there. Same thing on sewer operating. Fund balance is $1,280,000, so we're just having to use expense. Revenue and disbursements were, as usual, sewer improvement, fund balance by year, $19,265.39. Same thing, revenue, just a little bit from permit, collected and dispersed, $1,000. Water operating balance, $424,186.90. Create even on the revenues and disbursements for that one. And then on the water improvement, same thing, fund balance is just a little over where it was last month, because we had a little bit of a deposit for a building permit. And, that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Special gas, no special gas? Old business ordinance 2024-10.
Think we have to have a public hearing on this.
Correct.
Public hearing, opening the public hearing first?
Yes.
Okay, at this time for 2024-10 amendment, charge for the trash collection, we'll open the floor for a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on behalf of this subject? Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Carmen, do you want to speak on behalf of this, please?
At the last meeting, we introduced the ordinance and provided a couple of options for the council to consider as far as how to best handle the rate increase that we are receiving for Bestway. And what was decided on was to even average over the four years as it incrementally increases to an average of that increase, so increasing from the current rate of $13.15 to $18.05 for the normal trash and recycle pickup. The extra cans will go from $5 to $6, which will be requested directly through Bestway. They will handle all of the extra cans that residents receive. And we would be instituting a sticker program. So if you do not require an extra can every month, but maybe from time to time, have some extra bags that won't fit in the can, you could come to the town hall and purchase a sticker that would be placed on the bag and then sent out at the road for pickup along with the totes. Bestway charges less, 75 cents in the proposed charts, and the residents would be a dollar per sticker for that. Any questions?
On the notification and so forth, we're still, still have a plan in place for...
So Bestway will be sending out, Angie and I met this week, to kind of talk about our logistics, how we're going to communicate to residents. Bestway has provided a program along with a calendar that they'll be mailing out the week, next Monday, the 15th, and that'll start kind of our communication as well. We've got a couple of One Call Now, which is the text alert email, phone, however the residents have chosen to receive that, on how their cans will be picked up, how the new cans will be delivered. Kind of a what to expect, we'll have information on our social media website. And then, like I said, the brochure will kind of give an overview of what to expect as well. The one thing that it doesn't say in the brochure that we just make sure that the residents do know is that the extra cans will need to be ordered directly through Bestway, which is our communication we're sending out over the next, the end of July. But what will happen is the residents will be asked to leave their cans out the last week of July, which is the 29th and 30th, is their normal pickup. And make sure all of their cans are at the road, so if they have extra cans, not all the time do they set them along with the road. And then Republic will empty them, but then another truck will come around and actually pick the cans up. And then that same week, Bestway is to be delivering as well. So there may be a couple of days where they don't have a can, but they're, they're trash into, but hopefully that's all going to take place, fingers crossed smoothly, the last week of July.
Would trash continue to be on the same pickup day? Okay.
Pickup dates will be the same, the same schedule for recycling weeks. Your heavy trash will always be the first pickup of the month. And the only holidays that really get in, interfere with trash pickup is Labor Day and Memorial Day. I think we're really truly the only Monday, Tuesdays where we have issues. We make them still pick up when maybe the town halls closed on like Columbus Day. And not when the kids are famous.
Okay. Well, thank you for all your coordination and efforts on that. It will be.
Yeah.
Any questions, concerns up here? Motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance 2024-10.
Second.
Mr. Saylor, Mr. Goodecker, vote, please.
Tim Brown.
Yes.
Brad Goodecker.
Yes.
Joe Saylor.
Yes.
Richard Hill.
Yes.
Pass four to zero.
New Business Resolution 2024-04, the late filing abatement. Access Group LLC, Mr. Watson, assume that's you.
Well, I will introduce the standard procedure for abatements that a property owner receives. Every time that there is an increase in assessed value that they want to have covered by the abatement, they receive a notice of that increase in assessed value. And in response to that, they are supposed to file a Form 322 with the county by a set date. And in this case, Access did not get that filing taken care of until after that deadline. They have since made that filing. But since they were late, they are eligible for a waiver. The statute allows for waivers of the late filing. And so we've had contact and communication with Access representatives. They have submitted a request for the waiver. And so you have been provided a proposed resolution that would grant that waiver. And as part of the waiver process, there's a public hearing that has to be held. And so notice of that public hearing has been held. And before any, you know, consideration on adopting the Resolution 2024-04, which would grant the waiver, you have to have that public hearing. If there's any other specific questions you might have for me, I'm happy to answer those. But I believe that there's representatives of Access here. If you would like to hear anything further from them, you were provided a copy of their letter that explained the reason why they were late in their filing. So I'll leave it to you.
Did they fill out all the paperwork this time? Because last time wasn't it, some stuff left out? That last time in talking about it, wasn't there some, like, employees' things left out and stuff like that?
That was a different form.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure that we got corrected, too.
Well, that, no, nothing has been provided to modify what was provided on that. CF1 is the form you're probably referring to.
I couldn't remember the number of them.
Requested to
Okay.
supplement that at all, although you can ask them for additional information if you want.
That's fine if it's not requested. I just thought it was something that had to be filled out, so clarify that.
What is, can you clarify, what is the waiver length or extension to you from?
In this case, they filed their, well, filed their Form 322, I believe it was 16th of June, but could be a little bit off on that. And received by the town on June 13th. Dated June 10. I can't say for sure when the county actually received it. But it would have been due probably by May 15, looks like. So we're talking about a little less than a month late in the filing.
From looking at this, it doesn't look like, since it's been filed, it's complete. And there wasn't anything in it that would trigger an adverse result. This is, because of the content of it, there's actually no adverse impact to the town, correct?
Correct.
So we just have to open up a public hearing for this?
That's right. Oh, and by the way, I do see in their letter that you say they filed it with the county on June 11.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing for Resolution 2024-04. Would anybody like to speak, sir?
Yes.
Just ask if you come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Paul Goodman, legal representation for Access LLC, 7748 Madison Avenue, Suite A, Indianapolis. 46227.
Okay.
Thanks for your time this evening. Just wanted to highlight a few things. When we prepared, my firm prepared the initial tax abatement, and we went out to the, in the Secretary of State and pulled the address from the Secretary of State, which was Mr. Kissinger, owner of, it was his old address that we had. And we didn't confirm the address, we just took it from the Secretary of State. So when the reminder notice from Mr. Watson and Fulham, that would have been on April, sorry, February 20th from Mr. Watson. And then the Form 11, which was mailed on April 20th, we didn't receive either of those. Once we were notified of the issue, we prepared the required documentation through business station, got it filed. So we tried to do it as quickly as we could. As Mr. Watson had said, the statute does allow for a waiver of late filing due to clerical error. And we have correct that on a go-forward basis. So we have been approved for the abatement. The company relied on the abatement and putting their budgets together for '24 going into '25. And they've done what they said they were going to do, they got this thing built and people hired. And I think it's a good project, and will win both for Access and hopefully for the community. So we respectfully request that you waive our late filing of about three and a half weeks.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does anybody else in the audience like to speak at all? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any questions up here at all?
No, I don't, I don't.
No adverse effects, so...
I don't see any, any actual impact to us.
Do we have a motion on the table, then?
Did you, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I wouldn't listen. Did you close the public hearing already?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then I would, I would move to accept the waiver for late filing and I think that's all we have to do, right?
Uh, just approve the resolution.
Resolution 20.
An approved Resolution 2024-04.
I'll second.
Combination of the second, catch that?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
I backed off.
Tim Brown.
Yes.
Brad Goodecker.
Yes.
Joe Saylor.
Yes.
Richard Hill.
Yes.
Pass four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Park Board, Carmen, would you like to speak on that, please?
Yes, so at last month's meeting, I was indicated that we had quite an interest in the Parks Board. And kind of let you all, which means the folks that we chose and interest sporadically throughout the month, kind of touch base with each of you, and see where you're at. It's so hard, because you can only pick the willing four members, you pick two. You can only have two of the same political affiliation. And I think there's just, I think there's more details that we need from folks. So I just, I want to know if these appointments, if you also like, and if there's any questions that some of you all have in the ones for the work that we bring up. What's the next steps you'd like for us to take as far as narrowing down the list of candidates that we have? Or do we, what would you like to see, just to help you guys make this decision?
Do you have any comments?
You know I have comments.
I think so, yeah.
Get us off, forget us calling.
Just a couple of things. So going through this, I personally think my recommendation is maybe to have some recommendation on a few, a handful of people. Possibly do like an interview process, maybe get their resume, and kind of see exactly, verify the background and so forth. From a standpoint of the process guidelines and so forth, these individuals would be appointed, so they would follow our potential, our purchasing guidelines and so forth.
The Park Board would.
And then they would have a budget that they would work from, that things would come through the council for final approval, or how?
They would have a budget that you would have to approve. They can only spend money that you had.
Okay. And then they would have, like, free rein to develop, design, or is there oversight, or how does all that work? Is that, their concepts would come through an approval process, or we're just going to let them run?
Well, they're, they are kind of the oversight.
Okay, subject to you having, giving them the appropriations to do whatever they wanted to do. But once you've appropriated the money, then, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that we, correct me if I'm wrong, Stephen, but last time I looked into this, my recollection was that they, they're appointed by us, but they exist as another authority, for lack of a better word, put in a kind of like Stormwater Wood or BZA and whatnot. And so while we appoint them, they exercise independent judgment. I believe that's correct.
Yes, as a general matter, now, there's going to be exceptions, like, for example, I'd be, I can't say this for certain, but I would expect that any bond issues that they might enter into, they probably have to get the council's approval for that. But I can't say that for sure. And I haven't been asked to look at the details of the park statute and haven't had to deal with it otherwise lately. If you wanted more information on those kind of issues, we'd have to look into it a little bit further.
And then the terms would be two, three-year appointments, and then?
I'm staggered. I believe it's, I did not bring that with me, but I believe it's one, two, three, four to get started, and then four years after that.
And then it kind of goes through the appointment kind of concept thereafter, as you rotate through? Okay.
And then obviously, if you have vacancies throughout, then you just, they would fill the rest of that term, and then they would slowly up at the same timeframe as the others.
And they're all legislative appointments, right?
They are all legislative appointments. So that's, normally, we don't have this situation where we have so many people that are interested in that. But I want to make sure that you all are taking the time to select the ones that you feel are going to turn the town forward, how you want to see the town being carried forward. You know, the, I think we talked about, like, what Stephen mentioned, and I believe I've had a conversation with a couple of you, the budget would, you would set their budget, so they would need something that was not in their budget. They would have to come back toward to you all, or like bonding. Say they use TIP, you know, want to use a TIP bond or something like that for a project that's parks needed, that would come forward to this board for approval.
So, and I might be wrong. I got just one little question now. You know how you guys are allowed to spend so much, doc, council, proof on stuff? Will they fall under that same category?
The purchasing policy?
Yeah, since, since this is a board like, like we are, they shouldn't be able just to spend that once a month, because they're bored. It'd be like us being able to spend that much money.
Well, we don't have, if we had a Parks Director, that...
Right, Parks Director, that's what I was wondering.
The Parks Director would be, I would assume, subject to some, to the same purchasing policy of the town. The board isn't.
Well, that's what I assumed, but I wanted to just clarify for me, because Parks Director would be a supervisor like you and Chief and Slim and everybody, and they would have the same power as that, right?
You may not be able to afford a Parks Director right off the bat.
Correct.
The one thing that the, that the town council can decide is if the Parks Director is hired by the town or hired by the park, we hire, recommend hired by the town. The town, you know, leadership or whatever, that then obviously we report to you all directly. So the Parks Board doesn't hire their own staff directly, I believe is an option. Does that sound right, Joe?
I thought that the statute gave that to the board, but I'm not, I'd probably... It's been a long match since I've looked at it.
Because I know our Parks Director was hired by the board.
I didn't bring my parks information with me.
I just ask you. I know we're not there yet. I know we're not there yet.
We won't be able to afford a Parks Director right off the bat.
Right, I know we're not there yet. I was just curious, because I think, you know, with everybody reporting to the board, if we would hire, I think the board should have a say-so in it. You know, on who's going to be up there, be running the parks and stuff like that. If we got to that point, I think the board should have a decision.
And I just want to remind you the importance of why we are looking at having a Parks Board is, one, a lot of the grants that are out there specifically, like, say, the energy and art department, resources, requires you to have a Parks Board. There is, you know, and same with other type of funding opportunities. It also allows us to impose potential park impact fees. So as new developments come in, that they would be paying a certain set amount that would, you know, help to, wouldn't help pay for the Parks Department solely, but it would provide some funding to.
If we were to do some sort of interview process, that would be an executive session, right, Mr. Watson?
If you were to interview candidates for
Parks Board.
Parks Board? Possibly, I'd have to verify that. I can get back to you on that.
And we also did hire context architect, or context design to help us through this process. And so they, they have a lot more experience in this. Obviously, this is all new for us. That I could, you know, we'd be happy to have Fred Razow kind of help us navigate what is, what would be our next best steps. How do we, you know, should we, you know, have all five of you, or should you guys kind of appoint, like, or nominate two of you to, to be the, the ones that, I don't know. Just so then you don't have quorum kind of situation.
I would have thought we'd probably do two, that, like she said, that way we wouldn't have to do a quorum or anything like that. I would be comfortable with that. I would trust anybody up here to make the right decision.
I mean, that's just my recommendation to, I mean, I'm open for discussion, but I thought...
So, I just want to make sure I understand, right? So basically have two that kind of winnow through the applicants?
And then bring?
Bring a pool before the entire board to make...
Right, because I'm assuming we all want the same goals. We want what's best for White London. Being up here with you guys for these last seven months, it shows. So I would, I would be more comfortable to let someone else do it.
I don't have any problem with, with approaching it that way.
So from a standpoint of the pool selected, we just want to maybe send maybe top three or four to Carmen, and then kind of, or do we want to make that selection now, or how do you?
Well, I think we, how many, there's what, three?
There's four, no positions. More than two of the same political affiliation. So we have, we have Republicans, Democrats, independents, Republicans, we have all, don't interest.
Well, I guess my, I'm not originally from White London. And so I didn't grow up playing sports and whatnot here. So I'm, I'm very happy to defer to people who have been around here longer than I am as far as, as far as who the two would be to kind of go through and, and at least, you know, bring it down to six or whatever. Or whatever, whatever they come up with, who would be interested in doing that, I guess.
I'm in the same boat as you. I've not lived here all my life. People who have, you know, my, I've been here for about 25 years. So I didn't play sports here either, but, I mean, I'm good if Brad would like to do it, or maybe Debbie, Richard, anybody.
I have flexibility. I grew up around here.
Debbie and Richard sound like a good idea to me. I don't know.
It's no difference to me.
We'll ask Debbie if she chooses not to, and I get, I'll step up and do it. Fair enough?
Yeah, no, that's...
That's all right with you guys. I'd prefer you to do it, because you're more familiar with the local community than I am. You know more people.
I, well, yeah, thank you. I don't, that's not something I would like to take on. Now, like, I talked to Carmen, who's, you know, going through this and really getting our ducks in a row on this thing. And I know, like, she was kind of like taking names down of, you know, hey, I, you know, I think this is something we should move ahead with. And so like, I don't know if you kind of, if that's down to, you know, a more reasonable number that would fit the criteria, or if we're not necessarily, and the whole list is still there?
I, I would say that it's still the whole list. You know, I can dig in a little bit more, and I did ask for most of them, or that I received, I asked for resumes and I received most of them. So that may or may not help you make that decision. It really, I mean, ultimately, you know, I can look at and say, maybe take some of them out, because I, I don't feel like they would be a good fit. You know, I don't think that us just picking names because we recognize the names is the right method, or, you know, in my background in nonprofit, it's always been, we want a good mix of, of different demographics as far as, like, what do they bring to the table, but this is a little different, because we're not, you know, we... What do they bring to the table? But this is a little different because we're not, you know, we are asking for donations, but we don't necessarily need. All of our business, our market segment buckets kind of filled. So, um, you know, I look at it a little differently with that. But I also want to see people that have been a part of the community, but also have, you know, an age difference too. But with only four spots, you're kind of limited.
I think you have some decent candidates.
Committees, like subcommittees that are not the parks board, but you know, we're not going to need more volunteers to. Help kick off everything that we're wanting to do. So there's still ways to engage everybody that's on this list. Maybe in the area of interest, it's not, you know, a board type position. All right. So I'll ask Deb.
Okay.
And then Richard and.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for putting that together.
So far.
I had trouble reading on like the third page, what name went to us. I'm kidding.
If you don't mind, I have some follow up on some of your questions. One, on the executive session question, actual interviews with potential appointees. That is expressly excluded from executive session uh usage. However, you can review applications and kind of winnow down a list in executive session. You just can't have the interviews in executive session.
The interviews have to be open to the public?
Open meeting, yeah.
I didn't do that.
Yeah, if you're going to have an interview. Uh, but the the full. Full count.
But if we delegate two people to do it, then it can be private, correct?
Well, that's what I was in the process of of verifying because there's a new amendment to the open door law. As I recall, it provides a little more latitude to have committees that don't have to, you know, have open meetings and so forth. If it's obviously less than a quorum of the council. So that is a possibility. I'd like to want I'd want to verify that, but I I think that's probably a possibility that you have a two people if you wanted to.
All right, please do and just kind of relay that to Carmen and then I guess we can. Reconvene after your research, I guess.
And then one of the other questions you had asked about is, you know, whether the board would have the authority to basically hire. Um, those that do the work of the parks. And I'm looking at the statute that talks about their duties. And one of the things that is part of their duties is appoint the necessary administrative officers of the department, which would be the Department of Parks or Parks Department. And fix their duties. So it would be hiring and and so forth, those employees.
If the council funded the position.
Right, it's subject to funding. Then there's a section in the park statute that talks about their powers. And again, all of this would be subject to them having the funds appropriated and so forth. They have the power under contracts for leases for facilities and services, contract with persons for joint use of facilities. Uh, contract with another board, acquire and dispose of real and personal property. Exercise the power of eminent domain. Sell, lease or enter into royalty contracts, engage in self supporting activities. Contract for special and temporary services for professional assistance. And there's numerous other. What what's really curious is any bonding or borrowing authority. I'd be interested in knowing about that, see if I can.
I I think that they do.
Bond is. It's that they have the ability to bond, or to seek and bond.
Well, they already seek and bond, but it has to get approval by the council.
Sounds complicated.
Well, it's somewhat analogous to the redevelopment commission. I don't know if you're coming to understand. They they have a lot of power and authority and and act in large part independently because they have. You know, the TIF funds that they can spend and that's under their authority. And so, yeah, they have. A relatively high degree of autonomy, subject to any borrowing, uh, has to be approved by you.
Okay. Thanks, Carmen. Any other questions about that at all? Dollar tree of approval maintenance bonds?
Uh, so a couple of months ago, I indicated that we are going through all of our bonds that were still in performance. They need to be converted to maintenance as the projects have been done for. So I had provided you with an overview memo that just basically says that the Dollar Tree project. Is requesting approval of the maintenance on acceptance of dedication and improvements. We were considering twenty twenty one, but they have not been officially dedicated and accepted by the town. The improvements are the following. There were street improvements along Country Gate Drive. And the amount of the bond amount is twenty eight thousand eight hundred and thirty eight dollars. It's a maintenance dollar. The maintenance fund was discussed in sidewalk and median, but previous administration had given permission to not install the median along median. Along Country Gate Boulevard. So the maintenance bond is only for the sidewalk improvements of the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred and four dollars. And then there were water line improvements and the amount of twenty nine thousand and sixty four dollars. Um, so I would like to request the pending legal review, um, if you all accept the improvements that the Dollar Tree project. Had installed and completed in twenty twenty one. And it'll be a three year maintenance bond, as we discussed a couple of months ago, that even though these projects have been done for three years, then it'd be a three year maintenance bond. To the amount of twenty five percent of the total construction cost.
All right, I'll move to uh, accept dedication of the uh, improvements just listed by the Director of Administration. Subject to legal review.
I'll second.
Mr. Saylor, Mr. Brown. Have a vote, please.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Go Decker? Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Pass four to zero.
More logistics?
Same thing here. This is a request for more development, approval of maintenance bonds and acceptance of dedication and improvements. These improvements were completed by Pepper Construction Company LLC on behalf of more development. And we requested to be dedicated and accepted to the town of White London. Again, these were improvements that were completed in twenty twenty one. But have not been officially dedicated and accepted. The improvements include road and public improvements and the amount of their maintenance bond is eighteen thousand eighty one dollars and seventy five cents. It's a three year maintenance bond again at twenty five percent of the total construction cost. A request.
Have a motion on the table?
I'll move to uh, accept dedication of the road and public improvements just listed by the Director of Administration. For more development, subject to legal review.
Second. Mr. Saylor, Mr. Go Decker? And another vote, please.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Pass four to zero.
Uh, benefit renewal? Is that you, Carmen?
Yep.
Again, okay.
So just just to give you all an update, um, we met with the broker for benefits of medical and ancillary products. And, um, we are renewing effectively effective date of the purchase. So it did increase. So obviously this will impact the budget. Um, so just wanted to make you all aware of that. Um, the medical premium is the benefits will remain the same. The town pays ninety percent of the premium and the employees pay ten percent. And the total increase um is five point three percent. Um, so technically not only less than what we. Maybe what maybe others are experiencing.
Yes.
Um, the total increase in costs is what the town on the medical side is less than twenty thousand dollars. Um, total for the year. Um, so we're still looking at offering ninety percent if we make this work. Um, to the employees and the employer and the employees. Uh, in regards to the ancillary benefits, the current barrier that we have had a significant increase. And so our broker went out to shop the market for us and came back to us with Lincoln Financial Group. Um, offering pretty much the same coverage as far as our dental vision, life. Uh, basic life, voluntary life, short term disability, long term disability, um, kind of a fluctuate there. There were some increases, some decreases. Um, but overall, um, our net increase for both our medical premium and our ancillary products is only four percent. So technically the ancillary went down, um, like one point three percent if you can take into consideration that the medical would have just a little bit. Um, so overall to the town, um, I know I just mentioned less than twenty thousand, but with the ancillary, we're looking at an increase of fifteen thousand five hundred and. Fifty six dollars, so a four percent increase over last year's premium. So just wanted to make you aware of that. It's I don't know that we asked for your blessing or approval, but certainly would take any questions or. Send you all approve the budget and approve the premium increase.
Well, I I look through it. I'm. I'm happy that there that the 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 increase is as small as it is, especially with the way that that marketplace is going. Yeah, and it's it's really important to me that our employees, you know, when you work for a municipality. You sometimes don't get paid as much as as you do in other sectors, but the benefits are one thing that I think are really important to a lot of people. So, um, I I was pleased to see these numbers.
And maybe it might be worse next year.
Say worse?
It may be worse next year is what I gather.
Well, the one the one thing that really helped us is we went to a group rate instead of age rated. We used to be at age rated. And so it was, they would take each individual and say, okay, you're X age and this gender. So we're going to charge you this, but somebody of the opposite, you know, sex may have been less, let's say. Females and their, you know, cost more than a male depending on in their childbearing years. So now that we're kind of group rated, just because of the size of the company, it's actually helped our premiums and it can be in a bigger pool. When they do the underwriting, so.
Thank you. So we don't, this is just FYI. We don't have to, we don't have to vote on this or nothing? We don't.
No.
Four year.
I think that the reason for that is it's already been it's all put in a rated budget, right? Policy, it's.
Thank you. Um, conflict ventures, Mr. Go Decker and Rascals. Uh-oh.
Rascals.
Do you have anything to say on this?
Uh, the town approached me about a an event, kind of like a team building and some other things. So I, of course, said, yeah, we'd be thrilled to have you. I want them to come. I want people in the town to um, know what we're doing over there and the changes that we're making. Lost all negotiating power and I was like, well, you kind of tell me your budget and set the price and uh. Uh, we'll do that. And so, I mean, yeah, we're just, I mean, trying to show off the facility to everybody and uh, that kind of thing. We do a lot of these kinds of events for a lot of schools and small businesses, things like that. Um, and so, yeah, that I think that we got something kind of tentatively set in August, uh, filled out the conflict of.
Interest disclosure.
Um. Say if they needed to um, prior, uh, so we can make sure that that goes off without a hitch. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah.
Serve the people of the town that are helping provide the utility services and everything else that we rely on to serve the public. So it's great.
This is for the workers.
Correct, the town employees, yes.
What is the cost book?
I don't, I don't have that information in front of me. Um, I could tell you it is far less than I would I would quote somebody else. So I mean, point of emphasis to be just generous, so.
He has employees that pay too, so I feel like, you know, if we go there and set up games that we'd like to play, they have to. We'll make sure we're not getting crazy.
No, I'll I'll make the motion next.
Before you do that.
Oh, it needs to be read in the.
We should read in the record, but I also wanted to verify. My copy has not yet been signed. Do we have a signed copy?
Well, I I redid his, so that's what I need him to sign here, but I've got the original, right?
Don't really want to deal with the original.
Right, so I just need him to sign it because I just typed it up for him.
Sign and then on under, actually, section nine, date submitted. I would I would suggest that be today's date since that's when he's signing it. But you can scratch that and change that.
And did you beat him up on the price then?
Not at all.
Not at all?
She didn't need to.
That was fine. So just for the record, this would be a disclosure from Brad Go Decker. Uh, it is an annual disclosure. The name of the contractor is Rascals Fun Zone. The description of the contractor purchase is the town is considering holding an employee appreciation event at Rascals Fun Zone on a date to be determined. Of his financial interest is I have an ownership stake in Rascals Fun Zone and title as the managing partner. And it was signed and submitted today. All we needed to on the record.
Have a motion on this?
I'll move to approve. Mr. Go Decker's conflict of interest one.
A second.
I'll second.
Vote, please.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Go Decker?
Same.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Pass three to one.
And Richard, before you move on.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to step back to the employee health insurance and so forth. I was just looking at the. Uh, public, you know, purchasing policy. And and Carmen, maybe you can hang me out here, but what I'm seeing at least immediately is that. If things are appropriated previously appropriated in less than fifty thousand dollars, it looks like it doesn't require any separate approval. This on an annual basis would be greater than that. Um, was there something else that you were thinking that about this did not need council approval?
No, I just, um, I know in past in past years, so we have the rest of this year, because it's eight, one is the effective date. And so we have the rest of this year. So we would would be budgeted. We try to estimate what our premiums are going to be. And then we will have the next seven months for next year that will have to be budgeted and requested. So we should have, we would have enough for this year's budget to cover the remaining premium of this new policy. And then we'll come forward for twenty twenty five's budget with this premium being worked into the budget.
Yeah, based on what I now understand, I I would recommend that there be a express approval by the council. Just to make it clear and and consistent with the purchasing policy.
I'll move to approve the uh, employee benefits package as was previously described by the Director of Administration.
I'll second.
Mr. Saylor, Mr. Brown, vote please.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Go Decker? Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Pass four to zero.
And while we're going back on things, I'll move on the Parks Department. I did find in the statute related to bonds that, yes, they do have the authority to bond, however. However, in a separate section, it says that the board, Park Board, must obtain an ordinance approving the bond issue from the unit's fiscal body, so.
So that's us.
That was it.
That's all? You don't want to go back next week at all? I'm kidding. Not for now.
Uh, Director of Administration, operations, reporting, updates?
I just have a couple of quick things. We are working on the budgets for next year and, um, we'll be meeting with the Financial League of them helping us again this year. The one big thing that'll be different this year than was last year is we're trying to departmentalize and make, make things actually make sense as part of how and why we are paying for, um, what we're paying for and how we're paying for it. So it makes it easier with the realtor as positions change or people change in the positions. Um, they can have an easier document to kind of follow the, the paper trail, um, on how we pay for things. Um, and then this Friday, we are kicking off the community crossings of paving project. We're on the recon with Oak Day Lumera to connect work on the timeline. They're looking at starting in August, um, so that's right around the corner. And again, it's less than, so we're in the spring and all the other things. And then this type of little back. The call for projects for next year's paving has already opened and we, Sal and I sat down and kind of tried to figure out, what's our best strategy? Do we look at, we've got, now we're just left with our big roads. So we have Whitewind Road, um, Grand Street and, um, I think those are the main and probably part of Graham too. Um, that's not maybe getting touched with that. So we've got a, a lot of kind of figuring out what's going to be our next segment. We won't be able to do the whole road, um, so stay tuned on that. And then, uh, Community Night is the last Friday in July. Again, sacred day, all the fun stuff and fireworks and band and food, beverages, other higher level events. And, and play the old Sabbath, uh, I forget what it is. So no, we're looking forward to it kind of and you've got a small commitment of the employees that have been working on this this year. Um, and they've all done a great job, so.
So that's the 26th, 27th?
Yes, the 26th.
So it's a Friday.
Carmen, I had a question. Through our conversations and, and things like that over the past couple, few times, kind of discussed an asset disposal process or anything. Is there any traction on that of, of protocol in developing something when assets are disposed of, of the process and kind of maybe socializing with other departments to make sure there's not needs and things? Is there anything that can be discussed on that or bring us up to speed on that or?
We haven't formally like created any kind of ordinance around a true asset disposal. I know like we, we don't have like a threshold set as far as if it's X amount. I know I've come to you with like computers, you know, that are beyond their date that, you know, and talked about like their serial numbers and disposing of those, but as far as equipment, we have not. I know we've talked about purchasing and we've talked that, you know, who can purchase and at what levels and that, but we've not discussed proper disposal or, you know, steps that you would like for, you know, us to take when we dispose of equipment. If there's a certain amount, like a threshold, other communities, that thresholds that who can freely dispose of those. I mean, there's certain criteria with that, but we don't have any formal policies on that or ordinance.
I would like to see some, uh, Rick. I would like to see something before we get rid of anything, whether it goes to an auction, whether it goes, you know, if other of our departments could use them, I understand, I would like to see things go with them before we send them out to auctions or anything like that. Yeah, I understand that if, if let's say the street department bought something and they're selling it to the wastewater department, yeah, the wastewater out of their budget would have to, you know, pay that and stuff like that. It just would be nice that we could pass it amongst us in the, in our utilities versus sending it out to have, you know, like an auction or something if we needed a vehicle, needed trucks, jackhammers, stuff like that, tools, instead of just sending them out to be sold to put in a general fund. I would like to see us probably recycle them back into the fleet before we get rid of anything. That's, that's what I would like to see. Because it can save money over time, because if we're paying for the maintenance on them, we know the vehicles, we know that they've been treated well, we know that they've been serviced regular. So it's a good thing and it could save us from having to buy a brand new vehicle or a brand new bike or a brand new this for another area. That would be, I'd like to see something, if Carmen could kind of write up an ordinance for us. My recommendation is to have her write up an ordinance or someone would kind of, maybe you, maybe that's your department. At least that's what I would like to see, but I'm only one person.
Just something where before we dispose of it, other departments are notified that it's.
Correct.
Coming out here and, yeah, I, I think that probably makes sense to, and I don't even know. I suppose an ordinance would probably be the right way to do that.
I would just think that would make it all legal and then, you know, it kind of takes.
Simple guideline.
Department heads don't, they don't, they say, well, I know I got to follow this because it's that way. Just take, makes clarification for them to know what they can do with the stuff when it does get old or something. It's all lined out in paper. This is the process we got to go through. We're good with that and go from there. That would be my recommendation.
And did you have any comments at all?
No, I mean, I'm.
Think it's a good idea or?
I mean, I think that's fine. I, I, I'm not, I wasn't aware, I guess, that there was like a, um, incident precipitating that maybe or something, but, uh, I mean, yeah, I, I have no problem with it either.
So I guess that's your job, Stephen.
Yep. So I'll, I'll work with Carmen on that.
Or is there like, what do you consider a significant, like a hundred dollars, thousand dollars? Like what, what's the asset? Is it anxious?
To me, it's whether or not, um, like if we're talking about the police department has a bunch of old sirens and desktop computers running DOS and whatnot, or we're just talking about, we're just talking about getting rid of it. I, I don't care at all. If we're talking about sending something out where we're looking at a large market value, it probably makes sense to, to at least notify the other department heads if they want first crack at it.
I kind of agree with that. I mean, I don't want to nickel and dime it, but I'd like to, you know, if there's something, let's say, if we had to put a dollar amount on a thousand and up, you know, something like that, or even 500 and up, whatever you guys feel comfortable with. I mean, I think we just need to get it where we can recycle this stuff back to us and which in the end saves the town's people money because we're not buying new stuff. We're recycling what we have and making best use of it.
I mean, once you start at like maybe a thousand dollar threshold or something and then develop this and then we can click at it and tweak it and if it's too low, grade it, if it's not high enough or something, I don't know.
I mean, realistically, for something to actually be useful, it's going to almost certainly be a vehicle. Correct. There's really not much else that, that you're going to swap around. So I would be fine with a higher threshold, but, but that's just me.
It's a start.
Pick a number.
Carmen and I will coordinate on that.
Be great, thank you.
Sean, do you?
Figured out that our altitude valve at the St. Charles Tower is not closing all the way. So just kind of as an update, uh, we moved the bypass around that. We still have water coming into the towers, but tomorrow I've got a plan to be rebuilt. This thing probably hasn't been touched in 20 years probably. Too tight with the maintenance, I guess you'd say.
You say it's an altitude valve?
Correct. It controls your water flow and your power sensors.
Okay.
Goes on.
Is that a big expense or unexpected expense or just kind of general maintenance kind of concept? I had a question. Did we ever get a quote on doing the aquifer and seeing if that's?
Something I'm going to ask is if you guys want to run that, uh, in order to run it for, for a week, the well, we're looking at about 10 grand. It'll be up to you guys if you want me to have them set their pumps up and one of our wells is drilled and run it for a week and see what kind of comes out of it. First I've heard of it.
Well, I mean, I know you and I talked, but can you explain kind of the concept and what you were thinking to the rest of the council on why we got to this question? And maybe shed some light on it better?
If you ever wanted to go, what did you say, like get away from Indian American Water or build our own water plant, that kind of thing. Um, this would kind of be like one of the first steps of figuring out what we actually have and what we're going to kind of be, end up looking at and building a treatment plant for our water. From this and kind of see what the water does, what the levels and like they blow in and that kind of stuff, what, what they do. Then we can kind of make a determination of kind of what direction we want to go.
Or potentially what options you have, right?
Right. I'm all for exploring other options, something that would make us not solely dependent on Indian America.
That'd be a $27 million water plant. That's what that would end up being if, if we decide to go that route. Water plants are cheap. That's, I know the basic starts 27 million. I mean, that's a big cost for the town to take on. I mean, that's something that we talk about water rates and stuff. That's a strong race to pay for something like that for as many, and I agree with you. I like being self-sufficient, but I also like being money smart too. And to, and to dump a new up-to-date water plant, you're talking a lot of money.
I think the, I guess the reason to me it's worth it to look at feasibility, even though it is a lot of money is, one, Indian America's basically been trying to squeeze us into selling to them for a long time and I don't foresee them stopping that. And how long the IURC is going to hold them off, I don't know. And I guess the second thing is, is that if we do start looking at feasibility, that at least suggests that we, um, are willing to look at other options. I'm not saying we need to build a water plant or like that, but I would like to find out if it's potentially feasible, especially as the TIF revenues, you know, they're going to go up, you know, from 10 to 20 to 30, 40, 50, 60, 70, 80, 90, 100 over the next 10 years. So there will be some money there. I think it's worth looking at. I certainly wouldn't say it's a good idea at the moment.
Correct, that's, that's what I'm saying. I, I mean, I just know that it's going to be a bigger cost if that's what we think we're going to do. And there's other options that we can explore, but I mean, I have no heartburn with it. I, I'm just throwing it out there that I would have heartburn coming down.
This is just something to give you a kind of like a heads up of maybe falling in the future.
How much flow it gives you per minute and all that, that's what they're checking.
They did run this well. I think it was two days and it was really, really high in ammonia. But my thought is if we can run it for, you know, three, four, five, six days, then let's see what the ammonia level do just from fertilizer over many years. It's gotten down and off for, is, uh, you know, seeing what the levels might be.
So if you, if you do that test and, and then you have your data and then say 10, 15 years lapse on decision-making or whatever, do you have to reevaluate that? Or is, do you use that data as a prominent source of an option?
It's only good for so long.
Yeah.
Because it dries up, I mean, the water table drops. I mean, the more retention you pond you put in and stuff like that, the water table drops. So if we do it now, we know it's a good thing, it could be a bad thing in 10 years.
If you're at the top of the aquifer, it would be good, but if you're down at the bottom of it, you may have to look for another source of the well.
And that's just a stab in the dark on something like that. I mean, is it, no, yeah, but the information's only good for so long, you know, for a year, two years, depending if we get a dry summer or a wet win, a wet summer. I mean, there's a lot of things that take in factor to spit something like that.
I, I mean, I personally think having options and feasibility and stuff is, I mean, is part of the cost of doing business and, you know, within reason. It'd be interesting to, to find out if we do have any options.
Because they should be able to figure out off the gallon that comes out of that, what it would be, some of the bigger wells.
Okay, and then one other question, follow-up. I know, again, you and I talked, but could you bring up the council to the, oh, I guess the insurance and the renovation of the buildings and schedules and what's going on with all that and the maintenance shed area, all that, please?
The sewer plant, uh, they're still kind of working on one of the buildings there, the lab building. They're going to have new windows and new roof. That's all been done, but they sent the wrong windows, so they got to send those back.
Flushing.
Building with the press in it, in the conveyor, uh, that building's been all rebuilt. The clamp press that's in there has been all gone through and rebuilt. And then the conveyor, it won't be until, uh, I think it's November. A brand new conveyor will be in November installed by Matic. That'll be put in and then, uh, just got word back from the insurance guy, we're getting ready to start on. It's already in the works, but we're getting ready to start on rebuilding the salt farm and the street garage over there. So then when that gets done, I'm trying to get the buildings back that we truly need. And then when that gets done, uh, we're going to go back to the sewer plants, rebuild the maintenance building down there and then the sludge, really one building, but kind of a roof over the sludge holding area and get that rebuilt back.
Okay, so the maintenance barn and stuff, I mean, you're, you're thinking you might be kicking off, moving dirt and footers?
Yeah, it's already signed and okay and they're in the works.
And you got permits and everything? You had problem with permit?
No, there's.
I'm kidding.
We run it to, we run it for the state though, right? I was going to say.
All getting drawn by an engineer.
Yep.
And that's all going to get taken care of by him and sign off on.
Because I do think we should follow the rules, just like we make our builders. If they have to file for state, we should have to file for state. We should, even though we don't have to charge for permits, we should, if we're towns, you know, doing it. I do think we need to follow the steps the same as them. That's a big thing with me is making, well, I got a, a question. While we're over there, are we going to start? I guess I was meant to talk to you about it today and totally spaced it, but there's a lot of debris over there. A lot of dirt, a lot of concrete. Are we going to work on kind of getting that mess cleaned up for?
We're going to have to get contracted probably by a trucking company and just have them hold it.
Well, well, Mike could say, if we got a triaxle, we, we could talk to that guy down here. It's filling in that big ravine because he's taking concrete, he's taking everything there. We might be able to be, get rid of it and dump it for free if we can do our own trucking, you know, say on a day that we got a spare moment. I know CDLS is a big thing.
My Brad's thing.
Yeah, that guy's already in stormwater trouble.
Right, and that's what I was curious about. How did he get to do that and dump all that stuff without?
He didn't.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to know.
Guy by you did, did that?
So we've not put stop work orders on that because he's still dumping every day? I see trucks in and out there, so I assumed the town was all good with it. Because I'm like, why does he keep dumping if we didn't, I mean?
That was a borrow pit for the state when they built that bridge.
Correct. I, I have done a little research on it because I was kind of curious because, you know, we've got flood zone over here by Cody's house and to fill that in, all the work that we'd have to go. And that's why I was just amazed that I've not seen any big stuff, work order issued or anything like on the side. And he's still cracking mud out on the road and still filling it in.
He hard surfaced, he hard surfaced a whole.
Okay, I just didn't know that.
I don't know if it was the filling in or it was a problem. I don't know if it was the filling in that was a problem. It's, uh.
So we just have to haul it to Beaver? No, I mean, we'd have to haul our stuff to Beaver.
You and I are involved as well.
Well, that's good, cause I was curious, cause I kept wondering, how's he getting all that filled in? And the stuff that he was using, because, you know, with the blacktop he was putting in there too. There's blacktop and we all know we can't bury a blacktop. It's gotta be disposed of through a blacktop plant, they recycle it, put it back in the mix. So I was just curious.
Wow.
But we could haul it to Beaver or something like that, we could haul it out to Beaver, our stuff. I'm just saying, we could use our truck plus get a couple more. Why do we have a triaxle if we're not using it? That's my whole point, we got a big truck, why aren't we using it? And that's, that's just my question, and I've totally spaced it, I apologize for putting you on the spot. We can address this one-on-one later. I apologize, it's just something that come up and I forgot to mention it to you. Normally I try to tell you everything, that way you're not caught off guard. So if you'd like to discuss this later, I'm more than willing to do that. But I say if we have a truck and we can put a guy in it, that does save two hundred dollars an hour.
We're really far afield of what the fiscal body does. We generally delegated that decision to the Director of Operations.
Well, I think it's a legitimate question.
Hold on, I mean, if it's a question, I, I think it's absolutely a legitimate question, but I, I also don't know that this board is in a position to, uh, we, we gave Slim the authority to make that decision.
I'm not asking him to do it, I'm just asking him, why do we have a piece of equipment that we're not using, what would save the townspeople two hundred dollars an hour versus trucking? When we have to pay a guy anyway, that's all I'm asking. I'm, I'm not trying to tell you, you have to do that. If you decide to truck it all up, that's up to you, that's nothing I can say, I'm just asking a simple question.
Okay, we, we can take this offline or something.
But we can discuss it later if you want, but that's my only question.
Mr. Schiff? How you doing, sir?
Great, you guys?
Looking good?
Looking good.
Just gonna give a couple of updates, uh, July holiday, week and weekend went pretty good throughout the town. You can have a major, you know, pound in your house, so it went pretty well. Second thing is, we're in the Whitewind Police Department, it's in the process of turning the cadet program to mentor students that are interested maybe in making a career out of law enforcement. And we put the feelers out, got some applications, had pretty good turnout. So we had our first meeting last month, and we'll have another one this month, eighteenth. You will probably see them out at Community Day, helping officers or helping, just helping on this Community Day events that are needed for the police department. They're gonna go through class and learn what it takes, what is it still in becoming a police officer. They'll be training based on what we do from our officers that teach, uh, the classes. Pretty good turnout for what we was expecting and, uh, it looks like it is very interesting. So they'll have their own, we've designed their own uniform to wear, so they'll be recognized. It is under the Association of the Cadet Program of the State of Indiana, so we're all got all that. Just something to reach out to the students, kind of bridge that gap of police officers and students that are interested in possibly making a career out of it, so.
Very nice.
Looking forward to that. That's all I have.
Appreciate it, sir, thank you so much. Mr. Funkhauer, sir?
It's exciting for me, uh, the fire station's still moving along, exterior's pretty much done now at this time, so I'm guessing within the next one to two months, we should get the interior completed.
Yeah, good deal.
Operating on the station again, they ordered drywall, so we should be staying out here soon.
Once you get into the permanent, so what would we, what will you, or we, the town, I guess, the town, what will you do with the temporary thing? Is that?
Mobile hole.
Say where it's at, or do we put that somewhere else, or what, how does that work?
Sell it, or, uh, remember, insurance did pay for that, so if we make anything more than what insurance gave us, then we have to give, uh, we'd have to pay insurance back if we paid more than what we bought it for. So, but we would still own the land that we can use to hang on to and.
Find something, find something to do with it, huh? Okay. Thank you, sir. And one other question from last month, the, the sheds. Somebody was supposed to come in and speak or ask or had some questions.
So we met with the tenants, one was already in the process of moving out, we're down at the end of June, and then the other one had put in their notice and will be out at the end of this month. So we had just, all we had said was that there would not be a renewal of their lease, um, but they've all chosen to, um, terminate their lease earlier than, um, the March of, of next year. So now it's next steps of what we would like to do with the, the structures. I know the town is using one for storage and then the fire department's using two of them for temporary office space.
But I would think that we're gonna move them from here though, correct? We're not gonna leave them out here because of.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
That was my understanding. Cause eventually parking.
Repurpose them throughout the town if, uh, it's for town departments and get them, but we also need to look, cause the one, I'm pretty sure the floor needs to be replaced. So do we wanna replace it or do we want it just to dispose it? So let Slim and I kind of look once everybody gets out, um, and, and he can determine if it's something worth salvaging or, um, maybe repurpose or dispose of, or what kind of a suggestion might be, and then we'll come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Cause eventually think, if I'm not mistaken, Slim wanted a par, uh, wanted more parking out there, is that not right, Slim? That's what I thought you said, cause you said we're kind of tight for it anyway. I think that would be something that we'd look into once we relocated them, like at the street barn or someplace, or like if the firehouse had one, they could put it over there versus here and then put in a parking lot in.
Any other council issued comments? Public comments? Anything? Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn, thank you.